Again, I'd like to open the October 24th, 2017 meeting of City Council. I'll ask Clerk Colerole, please.
Ms. Walden? Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Here.
Ms. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
We do have a quorum, I do apologize. I'd like to ask everyone if we could please stand for a prayer and a pledge, please. Bow our heads. Let us pray. Lord, we come to you today to ask you for guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting, help us to engage in meaningful discussion, fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Milledgeville and Ballin County, continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the greater glory for you and the service of our city. We ask in these things, in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. First on our agenda tonight is awards and presentations, and we have a few. We're gonna start with a proclamation for National Adoption Day. Whereas Ballin County School System, Ballin STEAM Academy, and the 21st Century Learning Center grant program stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe, challenging, and engaging learning experiences that help children develop social, emotional, physical, academic skills. They support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends. These programs build stronger communities by involving students, parents, business leaders, adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, families, and adults, and they engage families, schools, and community partners in advancing the welfare of our children. And whereas school programs provide significant leadership in the area of our community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth grounded in the principle that quality programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. And whereas lights on after-school, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October 26th, 2017 promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. And whereas more than 28 million children in the U.S. have parents who work outside the home, and 15.1 million children have no place to go after school. And whereas after-school programs across the country are facing funding shortfall so severe that they are being forced to close their doors and turn off their lights. So now therefore, I, Gary Elthrow, as the Mayor of City of Milledgeville, do hereby proclaim October 26th, 2017 as Keeping the Lights On After School Day in the City of Milledgeville, and encourage and urge the citizens of the City of Milledgeville to do what is necessary to ensure all children have access to safe, engaging place where the lights are on after-school with innovative programs and activities. Keeping the Lights On After School Proclamation, does anyone here to accept this? Please come forward, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. You got a photograph, a photo walk right here? If I get some stand on?
So much stand on.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And now, the National Adoption Day proclamation. Whereas the City of Milledgeville recognizes the importance of giving children permanent, safe, and loving families through adoption, and whereas more than 12,000 children in Georgia today are in the foster care system, and whereas more than 100,000 children in the United States foster care system today are waiting to be adopted, and whereas more than 23,000 children age out of the foster care system every year without ever finding a permanent home and family, and whereas outreach of adoptive families have been identified as the critical step in moving children more quickly out of the foster system and into loving homes. And whereas to help these children find permanent nurturing families, the City of Milledgeville will celebrate National Adoption Day on Saturday, November 18th, joining others nationwide. And whereas the efforts will raise awareness in these communities of many children waiting to find homes, giving them a chance to join new families. So now therefore, I, Gary Elthrow, as the Mayor of City of Milledgeville, do hereby proclaim November 18th, 2017 as National Adoption Day in the City of Milledgeville, and in doing so, urge all citizens to join in a national effort to raise awareness of the importance of adoption. Could you come forward, please? Congratulations.
Thank you.
So much. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for all you do. Couple of other items we have. Don't know if, where's my award at? This is an award that goes into a year-long worth of effort from everyone involved in our city downtown development effort. This is a, Milledgeville's been awarded Exceptional Main Street Designated City by the State of Georgia. So this award goes to Carly and all her people within the city that do so much to keep our downtown as beautiful and as vibrant as it is. So congratulations, Carly. We also have tonight a check that Milledgeville has been awarded by the CDBG Grant for $600,000. Our team went down to Savannah lately to receive this check from the state. This will take care of some sewer needs that we have in our community and very much needed and is gonna be put to very good use. Does the City want to, Council want to come out and get a photograph, or you guys can just go without it? Go without it?
I'm representing this, me.
Sign it back up. Give me one second, let me regroup behind the bench back here.
Did he get low? To thank Marvin for her hard work with the CDBG grant application, and also would like to thank Carly for her hard work with Main Street on behalf of the council.
So you've all been, what a night. So you've all been issued a copy of the minutes of the October 10th, 2017 regular City Council meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ask Clerk Colerole, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Moving on into the old business, we have
We've got some closed session minutes that we need to adopt, too.
Not on the agenda. It was.
I do apologize, we do have closed session minutes that need to be approved for the dates of June 6th, 2017, June 13th, 2017, August 15th, 2017, September 5th, 2017, September 26th, 2017, and October 2nd, 2017. Have a motion to approve these minutes. Move, we approve. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ask Clerk Colerole, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving into the old business. We have, we have two public hearings to consider tonight. We will first be considering an overlay for the special use overlay for property at 200 South Liberty Street to allow for group residence. I'm gonna state the rules for both, and then we'll hear them both individually. So once it's been determined that the hearing has been properly advertised, then the clerk will read the proposed amendment. We'll hear from the advisory decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Chair will recognize any person or persons who would like to speak on behalf of the amendment. The chair will then hear from any person or persons who would like to speak in opposition to the amendment. We will then give an opportunity for rebuttal. When the chair recognizes any person or persons who would like to testify, I would ask that you first give your name and address for the record. Anyone who would like to speak is encouraged to do so, however, in the essence of time, I'm requesting that you keep your comments brief as possible. The first hearing to consider tonight is for ordinance O-1708-013. I'll ask, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by caption, please.
An ordinance amended ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002 known as the Land Development Code of the City of Milledgeville, Georgia. Ordinance grants overlay allowing a special use for the property located at 200 South Liberty Street.
I'll ask the Planning and Zoning Commissioner to please stand and give their advisory decision.
Okay, this was approved by a four to two vote, four for, two against, and tonight the hearing is strictly just to allow the overlay. It's for no special use or anything yet, but it's the overlay that would allow for the special use.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this amendment?
Yes, sir.
I'm Donnie Oldsmobile, Friar Oldsmobile, P.C. My address is 110 South Jefferson Street here in town, and I represent the applicant, Mr. Richard Sims. As Council sees on the screen, we are applying for the special overlay on 200 South Liberty Street. It is really no, or not very different, other than the actual address from the previous request that we have made. The 200 South Liberty Street structure was built in 1898. It is certainly one of our historic homes here in Milledgeville. It's almost 4,000 square feet. However, the restoration and upkeep of this house, particularly the restoration, will cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it is not sustainable as a single-family residence. Again, very similar to the ones that we have presented to Council before. This house is, is decaying. Without proper maintenance and upkeep, it will continue to deteriorate. What we will be asking Council, again, as we've asked before, is to allow the group overlay so we can come back and ask Council for group use on this property. It is, again, our position, as we have submitted to Council before, that group use allows us to invest the kind, or Mr. Sims specifically, to invest the kind of funds necessary to keep Milledgeville from losing this historic house. Group use, as we've submitted before, allows the city to restrict occupancy, allows the city to restrict use, requires off-street parking, and allows the city annual compliance inspections, which the city would not have, or does not have, right now with the current use of this property. Mr. Sims has an established record of investment in Milledgeville and an established record of restoration. He has already completed restorations at 330 West Green Street, 201 North Columbia Street, 211 South Wilkinson, and 120 North Clark Street. He's invested millions in Milledgeville. He is hands-on, he is local, and is responsive in managing these properties as a landlord. These are the four properties that I'm talking about. The top left, of course, is his house. The top right is the Zeta Sorority House that he has redone. The bottom left is the Tudor Mansion that he's redone for fraternity use, and the bottom right is the Clark Street property that he's renovated for the college to reuse. And these are some examples of the renovations that Mr. Sims does inside, so it's not only the exterior renovation of these properties, but the interior renovations as well. Our request will return, we will return with a group use plan, but as our application sets forth, what we're intending on proposing is an eight-person max occupancy for this 200 Liberty Street. No fraternity or sorority. We're not gonna come back and ask to put a fraternity or sorority in this property. We'll have dedicated off-street parking, and the renovations that we're anticipating doing will be done under U.S. Department of Interior standards because of the historic nature of this house. Simply put, these renovations can't be done without the group use. It's just not cost-effective to do these renovations to this property without having the ability to get some kind of return on your investment. Single-family just does not provide that kind of return on investment. Additionally, the overlay is appropriate for the area. This property is one block from Georgia College, very high student demand. The vast majority of homes in the area are, in fact, student occupied. Again, this building does need expensive renovation, and along with the expensive renovation, you have the continuing cost of maintenance. The group overlay is a compromise that gives the city some control over the use of the property, over the occupancy, over the parking, over the fire safety, and so forth, and we submit that this is a very appropriate use for this property. Frankly, it's not going to change the historic nature. As some of the council may recall, this property was previously a fraternity house, although not one that was in compliance with the city code. Mr. Sims purchased this property. He let the fraternity that was there know that, you know, he was terminating their tenancy, you know, as soon as he could under the lease, and he's moved that fraternity out. He's looking to remain in compliance with city code, and that's why we're here today asking for this overlay. Thank you. Any questions?
At this point, thank you.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to the? Come forward, please.
My name is John Alton. I live at 221 South Liberty Street, just about across the street from this property. You'd think I'd get used to doing this since I have to come about every month or so. I'm not sure where to begin, but there are a few things that I do need to cover on and off-subject. One, here requesting eight residents. According to one of the young ladies, there's 10 in there right now illegally. That was put before the Planning and Zoning Commission when they went before that committee. This is just the first step towards the rest of the block, which is beginning to take place every time I come to one of these meetings. To let you, remind you, and I'm sure that most of you already know this, but I think you need reminding, this house particularly was a single-family house for the 30 years I've been here. And for those 30 years, it was maintained by a single, by a single family. The bills and the maintenance were paid by a single family for 30 years. Decay occurred when the property sold several years ago, and the owner before Mr. Sims gradually didn't take care of it. So it is, if something's not done, going to be in bad shape. Is it livable? Absolutely, because there are 10 in there right now. Also, it didn't go on the open market. So having been available for single families, it wasn't, and it didn't go on the market when it first came up years ago. And I guess I have to remind a few things as you consider these properties that have become more and more critical to me, because like I say, that's just about across the street, and I have to put up with this on a regular basis. To say that most of the properties are occupied by students now is relatively true. Illegally, eight out of 12 on that block are zoned single-family, and have more than three unrelated in them. It becomes more difficult for some in the city like me, because I often ask the ones that used to come and talk to City Council about rezoning issues in the historic district and in the traditional neighborhoods, why don't you come anymore? Why don't you come and voice your opinion to the City Council like I do? Have you given up? And that's the answer. Most have given up because they see, do not see a light at the end of the tunnel, and I ask why? It's very evident. Several years ago, the City Council passed an ordinance, one to alleviate parking for residents within the historic district and to alleviate the parking problem on crowded streets. It was resident permit parking. Still in force? Not enforced. Take a check on the two blocks of South Liberty Street, and you'll find six to eight cars there every day, no stickers. The worst case is North Columbia, first and second block of North Columbia. 10 cars, I count, 10 cars every day on each block, no stickers. So you pass it, but it's not enforced. The second attempt was a three-unrelated rule to try and restrict the overcrowding of some of the older homes, deterioration of the neighborhoods. That was a good ordinance. It isn't doing any good. Eight out of 12 houses on South Liberty Street in the 200 block are now occupied by more than three unrelated, and they are single-family homes. You'll find these throughout the city, so the ordinance, that one, is not being enforced. The third one that the City Council passed to help some of its residents was a four-block area around Liberty, Washington Franklin, Green, and Wilkinson. No special use, no group use, no fraternity and sorority. It's already violated, that three times, and you're considering doing it again. So the citizens are discouraged because you passed three regulations to help the residents, three regulations to help preserve the historic district, three resolutions to try and promote and maintain tourism, which is an important asset to the city, and we don't enforce them. So I ask again, as I continue to ask, that it stop somewhere. This becomes the first step. Just overlay change. Well, you and I both know, if you change the overlay, you're gonna change the zoning, no doubt. It has happened in the past every time. So it is discouraging to continue to come and not get results, or satisfactory results. I'm hoping that you say it's time to stop. Is available housing for students, is it more appropriate for students? Now, let me change that. Is it better that students want to live in these little houses close to town? Sure they do. You have gone out of your way and passed experience to pass authority for apartments, student apartments, to be built in this town. That's what they're for. It gives you the opportunity to stop turning over these older homes to student living, when in fact, you need to preserve something in the historic district, some semblance of resident life or preserving the older building. Not to say that Mr. Sims doesn't do a good job of restoring buildings, he does, but again, that's an LLC. That's eight to 10 in a small house. That's taking like this building, if you drive by and look behind it, backyard leveled by bulldozer, connecting adjoining properties with a roadway, parking for anywhere from eight, 10, to 12 cars on a daily basis. And unfortunately, it's covered in crush and run. A parking lot, which is taking place with most of them. I ask you again, preserve the historic district, help us out, enforce three ordinances to help do that. Any questions?
At this point, I'll thank.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone want to offer any rebuttal? You had additional opposition? Okay, okay, well, you'd be next.
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly rebuttal. I think this comes down to the issues that we've talked about and presented to Council before. The fact of the matter is, even Colonel Alton just said eight of 10 houses on the block have some form of students using it, and I don't want to mischaracterize what he said, but that's what I understood him to say. That's what the market is in this area, is for student. There are houses in this block that have for 30, 40 years had student apartments in them, have had students living in them. This is not changing the character of the neighborhood, and while I appreciate that Colonel Alton may want the character of the neighborhood to be different and not to have students in it, the fact is, the real estate market dictates largely what the use is for, and you can't legislate what the market is. And certainly, this council did try some things a number of years ago to influence the market some, but the fact of the matter is, it didn't change the market. You're close to one of the finer, small colleges in the southeast, and you're gonna have students there. We can't stop that. Frankly, I think we should welcome that. Specifically with this house, though, I understand from the time the Martins passed away, it was in fact vacant for five to six years, and then Mr. Kidd purchased the house and put students in it. It was deteriorating, and when Mr. Kidd bought it, some things were done, and Mr. Sims has done some other things to it. But again, I get back to what are the benefits of putting the overlay and allowing group use ultimately, if that's what council decides to allow group use? The benefits are alleviating parking because the city then has the ability to regulate parking. It is in conformity with frankly what the neighborhood really is. And finally, Mr. Colonel Alton wants to suggest that this house has 10 residents in it. Mr. Sims and I have talked about that. That is blatantly false. Mr. Sims is currently renting this property to three girls. He is, after planning and zoning, had a discussion with them to confirm that they didn't have 10 people living in the house, and he has advised them again of what the law is with respect to this property right now, that it can have no more than three unrelated residents, and has been assured that that is in fact the case. There are no 10 students living in this house. There are three that are renting it now. Mr. Sims hopes that that will ultimately be eight if the city does see fit to grant his special use, his group residence use. Thank you.
Sir. Yes? I'll need you to state your name and address, please.
My name's Mary Catherine Rogers, and I live at 111 North Irwin Street. So if you couldn't tell, I'm a student here at Georgia College, and just to give a little bit of student insight to this issue, I just want to touch on three things. One, the parking ordinance that Colonel Alton spoke about, it is enforced, I can tell you from personal experience and my friends themselves, that they do put tickets out on cars, and like, for example, one time, I ran into this house exactly to use the restroom when I came up, ticket right in and there. So parking is enforced on this street. Second, the alternatives that y'all provide for students through the apartments, they're incredibly expensive. Living in a house ranges anywhere from three to four hundred dollars, while living in these apartments are upwards of six hundred, all the way up into the eight hundreds. For somebody who pays for school themselves, that's just not feasible, unless you want to drown yourself in, you know, more student debt. And lastly, the market is changing, I think y'all have heard this enough. This house is located so close to campus, it's completely ideal for students. It's 2017, we're not living in the past, and with Georgia College being such, or having such a major economic impact on the city, I just feel like it's imperative to think about that when you make zoning laws, just for the students' sake. And that'll be all. Any questions?
Anyone else with a rebuttal? Is anyone on council who'd like to ask questions or make statements at this point? Hearing none, this concludes the presentation of evidence. I'll entertain a motion on this, on this request.
Motion, we accept the findings of the P&amp;Z board and approve their request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask clerk to call a roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
No.
Ms. Shinholster?
No.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is to consider ordinance O-1708-014. Has the public hearing been correctly posted and advertised?
Yes, sir, it has been.
I'll ask, did you read the, read the, read the ordinance by caption?
An ordinance demanding the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the City of Millisville, Georgia, ordinance grants overlay allowing a special use for the property located at 310 West Green Street.
Thank you. Is anyone present who'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance, please?
This is Mayor Wood. Donnie Oldsmann, again, 110 South Jefferson Street. I'm again with Friar Oldsmann, PC, representing Mr. Sims, and I believe we have a presentation. Again, thank you, council. Again, we are asking for the group overlay on 310 West Green Street. This property was built in 1900, it's almost 4,000 square feet. Again, it's one block from the Georgia College campus, and it is in need of significant work on this property. Frankly, the same arguments that we submitted to council before. This is mixed-use, college-focused area. There's plenty of space on this property for off-the-street parking, and again, we're asking for market-driven use. The ability to have group use on this property will pay back Mr. Sims for his investment in the restoration of this property. The benefits of doing group use are that we get to preserve this home, save it for future generations. Mr. Sims intends on putting new electric and fire prevention systems in this property. Again, as before, if the city grants group use, they have the ability for annual inspections, control over the use and occupancy, control over the parking, again, all of those things that the city does not or would not have without the group use. Mr. Sims intends on returning with a group use plan for again, eight-person-max occupancy, again, no fraternity or sorority, and again, with dedicated off-street parking. Mr. Sims on this property actually owns the three adjacent properties all on West Green Street. They're all Mr. Sims' home. The last one on the block is his actual personal home, so he lives right one door down from this property. This will enable him to develop uniform landscaping plans and has incentives to keep the peace and beauty. Again, he lives one door down from this property. This is an example of the landscaping that's in the backyard right now on the West Green Street property. And again, we are requesting for a special use overlay. This is the condition of the property now. With Mr. Sims gets through with this, our city, at least in this one area, will look a lot better. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, or Mr. Sims, what is the parking plan for this house? Is there, is there existing parking fund, sufficient parking fund?
Richard Sims, I live at 330 West Green Street. This home has a huge lawn, and the adjacent property also has a huge lawn, so we will be proposing is with the group overlay, we'll come back and show the actual design of the property designed by architect and compliance with the common sense that this city ordinance is in the park, which the home is a, there's a soccer field in the backyard.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone like to speak, putting that in opposition?
Again, I have to, I read it. What Mr. Oldham said, I'll say again. Most of it's already been said about the previous property. This one is a little more specific and close to home to me. That block has not changed in thirty years. The house where Mr. Sims lives has always been a house where a family lived. The one next to it, it was grandfathered, has multi-use for years. And Mr. Charles Moore, lawyer in the City of Millisville, lived in that house. I've been in that house probably six or eight times a year for the past 25 years. And to say that it's in bad shape is a misnomer. He lived in the house, he took care of it, and he's one of the best carpenters like, that I've ever met. So I, I really don't understand that. Does the house need some work? They all do. If you got a house that's close to 100 years old, as are a lot of the houses on my block, there, it'll always work. And that's one of the things that you accept when you purchase one of these houses as a single family or as a single owner. I guess I have to go back to my, the three questions, and I'm, and I'm sorry if I continue to do this, but I do want to answer one. I want you, any one of you or all of you personally, to, in a school day, drive down North Columbia Street, 100 block and 200 block, and just slow down and check the parking stickers that are not there, and the parking tickets that are not being issued. Or in the case of 101 and 111 and 151 North Columbia Street, who continually park on the city right of way illegally, day after day, or across the sidewalk, heeding pedestrian traffic. So there are violations on a, on a daily basis. And are most of the houses on, or a good portion of the houses on Liberty Street now have students in them? Yeah? You said no, but you don't enforce it. You said no, but you don't enforce it. You have to do that if you expect the city want to step to say, there is a place in this city where we want students to go. There is a place where we allocate for student use, where we allocate for multi-use and fraternity and sorority. None of them are coming for it, because apparently, they do what they want. They're coming because the area where you say no is where the students want to go. You have the opportunity to say no. There's a place we've set aside to do that. And before I leave, I have a question, and I hope you can answer the question some one way or another. Is there a house in the four-block area of Green, Franklin, Clark, and Wilkinson that you would not rezone? But you're zoning all of them. Is there one that you would not? And your ordinance says none. Your ordinance says none. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Anyone offering any rebuttal? Before we do move into, before we conclude the evidence, I do need to get the, I do need to get the advisory decisions of planning and zoning, if I could, please.
Okay, this property was a tie vote with the chair breaking it and to deny the application.
Thanks so much.
Marvin. Is there any indication of, of a difference of opinion between the first property and the second? Okay, by P&amp;Z. Thank you.
Was there a reason for the denial? Was any, I mean, any specific reason given or?
No, one was not stated at the time of the vote.
It was not stated?
Anything else? Again, this does conclude the evidence of, presentation of evidence. I'll ask for a motion on this ordinance.
Motion, we- Motion, we reject the findings of the planning and zoning board and approve the application.
Second.
We have a motion to reject the decision and approve the ordinance. Any discussion? I'll ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
No.
Ms. Shinholster?
No.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
That motion carries. Moving on to new business. I'm sorry. What we need?
Is that, okay.
Moving on to new business. I would ask clerk for a first read of ordinance 01710017.
It's the first reading of an ordinance demanding the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the City of Millisville, Georgia. Ordinance grants a special use for the property located at 917 North Wilkinson Street, Suite Seven. The special use is for an automobile lot with a maximum of six cars.
And this will come back before council, I believe, on December 12th? Thank you so much. At this point in time, I'd ask clerk to, if he could present resolution R-1710037 by caption.
A resolution to authorize a relocation agreement with Georgia Power Company to relocate power poles and equipment in conjunction with and in preparation for streetscape phase
You've heard the resolution. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll ask clerk to call a roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
And that motion carries. I'd ask the clerk to read resolution R-1710038 by caption.
A resolution to authorize a, a water tank agreement with American Tank Maintenance for the maintenance of the water tank designated as the Veterans Tank.
You've heard the resolution? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll ask clerk to call a roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
That motion carries. I'd like to ask clerk if he would read resolution R-1710039 by caption.
A resolution to authorize a water maintenance tank agreement with American Tank Maintenance for the maintenance of the water tank designated as the Care Tank.
You've heard the resolution? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask clerk to call a roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
And that motion carries. At this point, I'd ask the clerk to, if he could read resolution R-1710040 by caption.
A resolution to authorize a water maintenance tank agreement with American Tank Maintenance for the maintenance of the water tank designated as the Care and Custody Tank.
So you've heard the resolution? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask clerk to call a roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
That motion carries. Lastly, I'll, I'll ask clerk if he would read R, resolution R-1710041 by caption.
A resolution to authorize a water maintenance tank agreement with American Tank Maintenance for the maintenance of the water tank designated as the Binion Tank.
You've heard the resolution? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
And that motion carries as well. We have two alcohol licenses, applications to, to consider tonight, the first being Little Tokyo at 2588 North Columbia Street. I'll ask clerk to read the application.
This is an application for alcoholic beverage license for Chai Lu on behalf of Lorina LLC Doing Business Little Tokyo Steak and Sushi, located 2588 North Columbia Street, and this is for beer and wine and liquor consumption on premises.
You've heard the application? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion? I'll ask clerk to call a roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
That motion carries. Last alcohol application to consider tonight is for the SNH shortstop number two located at 1431 West Hancock Street. I'll ask the clerk if he would read the application.
This is for Hettle Patel on behalf of SNH shortstop number two located at 431 West Hancock Street, and this is for beer and wine retail package to go.
So you've heard the application? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one, it's 1431 West Hancock, instead of 431.
Any other discussion? Ask clerk to call a roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
That motion carries. I've got a request to amend the agenda tonight to include resolution R-1710042. I need a motion to approve the amendment, to amend the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we amend the agenda to include the resolution.
Second.
A motion and a second. Ask clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Motion carries. So at this point in time, I would ask the clerk to read resolution R-1710042 by caption,
To enact a moratorium temporarily suspending all applications for multifamily residential MR1 and MR2 rezoning and planned development PD, rezoning within the city of Mellesville, and temporarily suspend all applications for fraternity, sorority, group residence overlay, and group residence special exceptions, sections 4.1.28 of the Land Development Code, within the city of Mellesville's historic district for a period of four months, and for other
Thank you. You've heard the resolution. Is there any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
And that motion carries. This concludes our normal business. I just want to take this time to thank anyone and everyone who had a role to play in the recent Deep Roots Festival, from the street cleaners to the people who took up tickets, to the people who brought in the bands, and Carly and Frank and Hank. I mean, I just saw people working all weekend. I sure appreciate all the volunteer efforts they had. Want to also thank Mr. Jared and his staff at City Hall. They put on a board appreciation dinner the other night, and I've had nothing but compliments from that. Thought it was a great idea. I think it went a long way, letting people know how much we appreciate their service. So, any other, anything else to come before council tonight? Nothing else on the agenda, I'll ask, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Hearing no opposition, we stand adjourned.
Go dogs.